Well alright, well I've got 10:32 and I want to be a good steward of our time. And I want to make sure that we are going to be able to cover everything we want to cover today. So we're going to get started. We're going to open up with a word of prayer. I'm just curious to have anybody who would like to volunteer to open us up for prayer. No pressure if you don't want to, I will do that. But I always like to give folks the opportunity for the privilege to pray for our class today. And so if I had any volunteers, I'd like to give you that privilege right now.
I guess we volunteered you.
Alright, let's pray. Father, we are humbled and honored and thankful that you love us like you do. You love us to create us in your image. We are fearfully and wonderfully made according to your holy word. And we're made, God, to do one thing while we walk this earth. And that's to give you maximum glory. God, we thank you, God, that you love us enough to not withhold anything from us, including your one and only Son, who lived in sinless perfection, who went to the cross to die for our sins, who defeated death, and who has promised to return. And God, we look forward to your Son's return, where he will establish a new Jerusalem, a new heaven, a new earth, that we will have new incorruptible bodies. And we can enjoy living with you now and forever. And so God, I'm just thankful, God, for every person who is here this morning. God, I'm praying, Father, you open our hearts and open our minds to the truth of your Scripture. And God, I pray, Father, that our hearts are in one accord with you. And that, God, as we take this journey, understanding a little bit better what your word says about heaven, the new heaven and the new earth, that, God, we will have a greater understanding, long for it more, and long for others, God, who we know don't know you. That if, Father, if they died, they would miss the bliss of the new heaven and the new earth. So God, I pray, Father, it's not just going to bring comfort to us. It's not going to just bring any longing spirit, God, for you to return and for us to enjoy the new heaven and the earth. But God, I pray, Father, it also stirs in our hearts and our souls a greater desire to share the gospel so others can experience the perfection of our Savior, his great love and redemption from our sin. And also, God, enjoy our time together forever and ever in our new incorruptible bodies when Jesus does come back for the new heaven and the new earth. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. Alright, well let me start off with a few questions here and just kind of get a little baseline. I think it's always really interesting to kind of look at what people, their concepts of what heaven would be. But we're going to talk, we're going to start off with, imagine you're five years old. You're five years old, and tell me what you think, what do you think your thoughts were about heaven? And I'm not looking for, you know, I'm not looking for a whole theological treatise here. Obviously, you're five. But it's just some thoughts of what you thought heaven was like when you were a child, maybe five or so. Anybody have any memories of what you thought heaven may be like when you were a child?
It's a long way back, boys.
It is a long way back. I understand that, I get that. And but if you can't get back to five, go back to 12, how's that?
At that point, I think I just thought it was a great place and it's somewhere up there.
Okay, Jane, I think you're right. I think a lot of us just thought, okay, it's somewhere out there. And what do you think that perception is? Why do we think oftentimes of heaven being out there?
Because we can't see it, we can't see God. We know it's there, but we don't know where there is.
Absolutely.
So with that, to me, that's out there.
That's true. And you think about a lot of artwork you saw as a kid. What was some of the artwork that kind of depicted heaven when you were a kid?
Clouds.
Clouds?
I mean, people walking around in choir robes.
People walking around in choir robes. Everybody seems in a choir in heaven, so you got a choir robe, right? Anything else?
Bright lights.
Bright lights?
Angels.
Angels. And angels oftentimes, well, tell me what you saw when you saw angels? Or when?
Well, you know, the pictures of angels, and I'm sure that they're far from right. But, you know, normally it's a beautiful lady. She's in a white robe, you know, got her wings and her halo.
Right, absolutely.
It has to be up and out there somewhere because it certainly isn't here.
Well, that's, we're going to get to that, that's a good point, Red, absolutely. How about the little baby, little angel, little cherubs, you know? And, you know, they're just so sweet and innocent. And you talked about the beautiful kind of angelic woman type of figure that angels were given. And the Scripture is pretty clear, you know, angels don't have sex. You know, they are God's special beings in heaven. And a lot of us bidding here on earth as well. But if you look at Scriptures, real interesting, anytime someone on earth encounters an angel, what is their first reaction?
Fear.
Fear. Horror, I mean, just it's like, oh, you know this is an otherworldly figure. And there's immense power. And it makes sense because although, we're going to talk about this a lot, although our God is omnipresent, which means he is everywhere all the time, we're going to talk about how in heaven, in the throne room of heaven even, there is a special dwelling place of God, where he reigns and where he rules. And let there be light, so there you go. So these are good observations here. Next question for you. We kind of talked about this, your perception, where did your perception of heaven come from?
I think of Sunday school.
Sunday school? Right?
And artwork.
Artwork, yeah.
Media.
Media? Stories, you know, you see movies and they depict heaven. I remember there was a, it was an old movie I saw as a kid. It had Warren Beatty in it, it was called Heaven Can Wait. I don't know if y'all remember that movie or not.
No, I was like, it was going through my head when you said that.
And it was real interesting, you know, about a guy who was, I think he was a football player, and he got taken too early, they're going to put him back down or something. But anyway, it was just, you know, he's walking in clouds. And it's just, you know, there's nothing, it's kind of an ethereal type thing. So yeah, our perception, if it's not from Scripture, this one thing we're going to kind of talk about over and over again, is not going to be a proper perception. Everything that we're talking about in here, we're going to draw from God's word. We don't want to, well, just like God's word says, we're going to add it to it, we're not going to take away from it. We're going to look at it, study it, understand it, so we can understand what heaven is.
You know, you said us as clouds, walking in clouds, looking at the clouds. But when we were kids, we didn't realize that cloud was nothing but far away up there.
Right.
You know, when we had far, we had clouds down here.
That's right, that's right. Last question before we kind of look at our little video here. Hey, welcome, welcome.
Another one.
Hi.
Alright, oh, awesome, awesome. Well, y'all can come around the table, we have some more room over here. I hate to y'all. Oh, you're fine, you're fine. So you got to come by me and get your materials anyway, how's that?
Thank you.
And we got to thank y'all for coming. We were just discussing, just to kind of bring it up today, we were looking at our perceptions of heaven as a kid, where those perceptions came from. And let me ask final question here. How has your perception of heaven changed as you became an adult? Has it changed? And if so, how has it changed?
Well, obviously, they're not walking on the clouds.
That's right. So we do kind of get this understanding that if you try to walk in a crowd, cloud, gravity is going to play an effect into that, right?
I've come to appreciate there are different levels of heaven.
Okay, different levels.
It's a holy place.
It is a holy place. And I tell you, that is a huge, that is a huge truth to understand because our holy God cannot have in his dwelling place that which is unholy. That is why Jesus died for our sins. He makes us holy. We are in the process of every day becoming more like him as we seek him, right? And so it doesn't mean that we won't sin after we come to know Christ. But our, our... We're also trying to thought here. No, you're fine. Anyway, oh, we were talking about God's holiness and our unholiness. When we receive Christ, and you know, we had this image, and Scripture talks about this a lot, we are covered by the blood of Christ. And that blood, where that comes from is, if you remember, in the Exodus, when the Jews were about to go out of Egypt and about to go and cross the Red Sea and ultimately make their way into the Promised Land, what was the last plague of the Pharaoh's plagues?
The plague of losing their firstborn.
That's right. And there was something that the Jews had to do in order for when the death angel did pass, he would pass over, and this is where we get the term Passover, the Jewish holiday Passover, he would pass over certain houses that had did what, do you remember? They put the blood, right, around the door frame, right? And so you're covered by this blood, that blood of the Lamb protects you. Well, now, this is good, I get two months just thinking about it, the blood of the holy Lamb of God protects us because it was shed on the cross. And that's why we have the privilege of those of us who have repented of our sins and asked Jesus to be our Lord and Savior and accepted this free gift of salvation, we get this privilege of being one of his. Not because of anything that we've done, but it's all because of the finished work of Jesus Christ. And so this is why my favorite passage, and you hear me say this a lot of times, it reoccurs itself when I'm preaching because it gets to the motive of why we do what we do. Jesus tells us in John 14:15, "If you love me, you'll obey my commands." So my desire to obey God is not that I can obey him that I will gain entrance into heaven. My entrance into heaven has already taken place because of the finished work of Jesus. So now, I want to love my Savior back. I want to love him, I want to love him as much as I can. And I understand, according to God's word, the only way I can love Jesus is through my faithful obedience. And listen, I don't have to tell you this, if you walk with Jesus at all, even in a couple of weeks, you understand the peace and the joy and the contentment in your life is directly affected to how much you love Jesus, how much you obey him. There's a contentment, there's a peace, there's a joy. Selfishness and sin always rob us of our relationship with Jesus. And so that's, and that's a good thing, let me say that's a good thing because that's the whole, when you sense that, that's the Holy Spirit telling you, you are out of bounds, you need to confess and repent your sins. And that's a good thing. But this whole idea of God being holy and we're being covered by the blood and because of that, when God sees us and Jesus has taken the rap that was due to us, when he sees us in that final judgment, he sees the blood of Jesus. Not because of anything that we've done, but because of the finished work of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. That's good news, amen?
Amen.
Amen. Alright, well, let me just take you through this video, it's only about 12 minutes long. And if you look at your handout I gave you, I've kind of progressed through this, okay? So you don't have to look at this, we're going to go through this handout after this video gets over. And we're going to look at some of the things that Randy Alcorn unpacks in this little video. But the big emphasis today is, if you look at the top, what is heaven? And why is it important for us to think about? So this is kind of the foundation we're trying to lay for the next five weeks as we go through this particular study. Alright, so here we go. These are very interesting times that we live in, I will say that. The way that evil is accepted today, the way that I would say even evil is celebrated today, the way things have turned upside down even. Matter of fact, I was reading Psalms 14 yesterday, and it said this, it said, "There's a way that seems right to man, but in the end it leads to death." And so there's a wholeness understanding oftentimes. People have put their own values of things, value of life is no longer, I tell you, this is the thing that's really, you know, we talk about, you know, abortion isn't a great, a great, great evil. It's the, it is obvious that life, if you look at it from the biblical, if you look at it from Psalm 139 where it says, "That God knit me together in my mother's womb." Biblically speaking, life begins at conception, it begins at that moment. And we look at that, people try to justify it. Many times I've gotten into an argument with someone, I won't say an argument, let's say a pleasant discussion, maybe that's a good way to say it, right? With someone who maybe doesn't believe that, I always ask this question, I always say, "Well, if life doesn't begin at conception, and you say that you are scientifically based and you're scientifically minded, give me the exact moment life begins." There's got to be a nanosecond to where, okay, you say this is a massive cells and it's not a life, but then there's got to be a time when it does become a life. Can you give me that exact time where that massive cells becomes a baby? I've never, ever, ever gotten any type of response to that. "Well, it kind of depends," and the, you know. Well, no, you said that the exact science was exact, you know, we follow the science and it's an exact thing. So tell me, you know, there's, if you don't believe it happens then, there's got to be a point. And I've never gotten a straight answer on that. Life is, as we see it now, is just disregarded. And let me say this, it's not just on that end of life as well. It's for our folks who are elderly also. I was reading a story, oh, this is really crazy. I was reading a story last week of a Canadian, she was a former military, she was in the Canadian Army. And somehow she became a paraplegic, she's in a wheelchair. And so the Canadian government, you know, they have socialized medicine, and everybody talks about how good that is until they need something. And so she's been asking for a wheelchair ramp from the government, which they're supposed to give to her, for years and years and years. And they said, you know, "We'll get to it, we'll get to it." So she kept complaining and kept complaining. As a matter of fact, this woman was an athlete, she was in the Paralympics even, you know. So she's, she's very healthy, otherwise, other than the fact that she can't use her legs, she's a paraplegic. And she kept complaining and kept complaining. And they said, "If you're, we can't give you the ramp now, but if you would like to, for us to help you in assisted suicide, we would be helping and happy to help you with that immediately." In Canada, there is a new service, they have what they call, it's an acronym made, it's, I forgot what, gosh, I wish I'd remembered. But basically, there are these pods that you can request to go into if you're having terminal illness or something like that. And they will allow you to kill yourself legally that way. So I say all that to say, the disregard, well, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. The disregard for human life is at an all-time high. And that is tragic because I think we all understand this. We are the pinnacle of God's creation. We are the only beings that have the capacity to have a relationship with God through his Son by the power of the Holy Spirit and to have this time of entering into eternity in heaven with God and his Son and the Holy Spirit. We're the only ones that can do that. And yet, human life today is just discarded and it's just not have a lot of value. So, but the good news is this, it's easy. And again, even everything that's happened with Hamas, you see what's happening in Israel and everything right now. I even talked about this on my preaching on Sunday, about how I was consuming so much news about the tragedy that was going on over there that it was starting to affect me and my mental attitude. And I'm like, you know, and I said, "Listen, y'all, be careful how much news you consume. Be careful how much stuff you consume." I'm not saying we don't need to be informed, absolutely, we need to be informed about this world and how to pray for this world. Not a wrong thing to do that at all. But if you consume too much of that and you don't consume enough of God's word, it's easy to get into a down and depressive state. And this is why I think it's, now, listen, here's the thing. But I've been planning to do this study since really way back earlier this year. And finally, we got to a point where like, this is a good time, we can do this, we could be, we'll have six weeks, we'll be done by Thanksgiving, and it's going to be a wonderful study. I had no clue of how, even since when I was planning this to where we are now, how the world has tumbled. I think we can all see that, the world's in a mess, it's in a mess. And so why I think is valuable for us to study about heaven is because it's going to keep us having things in a proper perspective. If all we think about is all the tragedy that's going on in this world, it's going to bring you down. We have to understand that we as believers, this world, as he says, as it is now, is not our home. And I'm thankful for that, amen? Right, it's a lot of tragedy, a lot of evil, a lot of sin. But the good news is, this is not our final destination in the world as it is now. Now, he defined heaven, I'll go to your handout now. He said, "Heaven is God's special dwelling place, where he lives with angels and his people who have died and gone home." Now, I'm thankful for that. I got a little excerpt, I'm going to read out of our book I just gave you because it's very different. Where, I think about my mother and father who have gone to be with Jesus. They're in heaven, but they haven't gotten their new resurrected bodies yet. And so, and we're going to get those basically at the same time. If Jesus comes back, we'll get those. But it says, "Those who are dead first, they'll get their bodies first, right soon after, we'll get ours." And so, understanding that there is a special dwelling place right now that is the throne room of God, that is somewhere, we don't, we can't pinpoint exactly where that is, that is understood as heaven. But there's a new heaven and a new earth that's going to happen, and we'll get that in just a little bit. He said this to, I thought this is good. "God is omnipresent, but in a more special way in heaven." This is where he rules. I liked that little excerpt, I forgot who he said, he talked about, you know, comparing life now compared to heaven and use, we're like a fish in a bowl now. You know, we have enough to survive, we can enjoy maybe a breath or two from, from the, but when we are in heaven, it's going to be like we're in the ocean. It's just going to be vastly, much, much better. And he talked about the fact that we should long for heaven, right? And I gave you this passage in Isaiah because I love this passage. I want to, do I have a volunteer that would like to read that? I'm going to be talking a lot, so do I have a volunteer to read those first, those four verses that are on your handout there? Thank you.
"In the year that King Uzziah died, I saw the Lord seated on a high and lofty throne, and the hem of his robe filled the temple. Seraphim were standing above him; they each had six wings, with two that covered their faces, with two that covered their feet, and with two that flew. And one called to another, 'Holy, holy, holy is the Lord of armies;' his glory fills the whole earth. The foundations of the doorway shook at the sound of their voices, and the temple was filled with smoke."
Amen, thank you, Jane. This is giving, kind of pulling the curtain back to what's happening even in heaven as we speak right now. Right now, there are angelic beings called seraphim that are singing the praises of God 24/7 forever. And this is a high, high honor for whoever these seraphim, these angelic beings are. And we see a few things that are happening that kind of give us an understanding of who God is. First of all, it says, "The hem of his robe filled the temple." It's talking, the length of a robe oftentimes was based on how kindly a king was. Now, this, we're talking about the king of kings. So his robe is the lawless robe, he is the king of kings, there's no one like him. It talked about on verse four, when the seraphim are proclaiming the glory, the holiness, how God is set apart, there's no one like him, he is pure and holy. When they are proclaiming this absolute fact, this truth of who our God is, the doorway shook. That truth is so groundbreaking, the doorway shook. And it talks about, "The temple was filled with smoke." Now, what that is symbolic of is, again, the omnipresent nature of our God. If you've ever been in a smoke, if we filled this room with smoke, there would be no place you could go that you wouldn't inhale the smoke, right? And so that's kind of indicative and symbolic of the omnipresent nature of God. And again, his omnipresent nature extends to the ends of this universe, but a special dwelling place where he reigns and where he rules and where he carries out his sovereign will is in the throne room of heaven. And that's the next built point, heaven is where God's throne is, where he rules and carries out his sovereign plan. "We were born into a world that's under a curse, this is not our home as it is." And I liked that example too of travel, I love to travel. I've often told Hope, I said, you know, if I ever came into a lot of money, I doubt our lifestyle would change that much, you know, we wouldn't have a lot more things. But one thing that would change, we would travel a lot more, man. I would love to, there's different places I would love to travel. There are different missionaries I'd like to go and encourage and help and to be a part of their mission or work, you know. If I had an endless stream of money that I could do that, man, I would love that. But here's the thing, you probably know this as well, it's fun to travel, but those last couple of days oftentimes, you're thinking what? There's no place like home, you're ready to get home. And listen, as nice as a comfortable bed may be and your facilities and where you're at, it can be a beautiful, incredible paradise type of place. Two things I know for sure, there's nothing like my own bed and there's nothing like my own shower. And so I'm grateful for that. And that, again, I think that's a very indicative of the fact that we long, if you are a believer in Christ Jesus, if you have the Holy Spirit that has sealed himself to you, and that's exactly what happens according to Ephesians 1:3, when you come to know Christ, the eternal Holy Spirit permanently attaches himself to the only eternal part of who we are, our soul. That is inseparable. And when that happens, there's going to be a longing to be with God forever. You know that's going to happen. Look at this passage in Philippians, Philippians 1:21 through 23. Do I have a volunteer to read that one? Thank you, Mary.
"For me to live is Christ, and to die is gain; for if I live only in flesh, this means fruitful work for me, and I don't know which one I should choose; I am torn between the two; I long to depart and be with Christ, which is far better."
Amen. I love Paul, I love Paul's understanding. So, and I love this, this is, this is the ultimate win-win circumstance for believers. To live is Christ and to die is gain. One of my favorite passages because it reminds me, as long as I'm drawing breath into my lungs, I'm going to be doing everything I possibly can to give God glory. I want to raise my children to love Jesus, I want to serve my, I want to be a servant leadership to my bride, I want to serve my church well, I want to be a good neighbor, I want to do all the things that God's called me to do while I'm drawing breath in my lungs. But I understand when God ultimately calls me home, according to Scripture, I would, I'm going to miss folks, I mean, you know, there's going to be a longing maybe, you know, you can think about who we're going to miss. But listen, when you're in the very presence of God in the throne room of heaven, there's going to be no place like that, there's going to be nothing like that. To live is Christ, and we're going to do everything as we do, and we're going to live fully for him, we're going to live abundant lives through him by the power of the Holy Spirit. But when we go home to die, that's going to be the ultimate gain. And I think that's one of the things that keeps staying in perspective. It reminds me too that, you know what? When things aren't going well on this earth, I have to remind myself, okay? And here's the thing, when I saw all this junk happening with Hamas in Israel, and there's been some horrific stories coming. If you've seen any of the pictures, I would advise you not to search them out, but there's some horrible images of what they've done. There was a report yesterday that they went into one village and they found 40 babies dead, some of them decapitated. And bang, they kept me chopping the heads off of, that is just an evil, that's just an evil that is hard for me to wrap my mind around, you know what I'm saying? The most innocent of innocents certainly can't defend themselves, and you see that happening. And again, that's why if you feed yourself too much news and that's all you're dwelling on, it can be a burden, it can weigh on your heart heavily. And so I will say this, you know, one thing that has done to me, it's made me realize, I've got to be more bold in my witness to my neighbors, to the people I encounter on at the gym. I've got to be even more vigilant and more looking for opportunities. God, I don't want anybody to miss the splendor and the joy and the abundant life that you promised right now, Jesus. And I certainly don't want them to miss the new heaven and new earth where we live with you forever and ever and ever. Listen, the only hope for this world, and I think you know this, is Jesus Christ. It's not social programs, and I'm not saying these things are bad, but I'm telling you, the end-all, be-all, what's going to make this world change and what's going to help this world more than anything is faithful believers living out godly lives, not perfect lives, godly lives for God's glory. And part of that is going to be more verbal and more bold in our witness. Not pushing it on people, and it's going to take a lot of prayer to do that. Man, I've got a prayer list, when I'm praying for people that I know that are lost every day, I'm looking for opportunities and I'm asking God to open up doors and windows that I can get a foothold in there, that I can build a bridge to get to the gospel. I'm praying for these things every day because I don't want to miss one opportunity. I'm praying for these things every day, because I don't wanna miss one opportunity God gives me to be a part of this glorious and wonderful command he's given us, called the Great Commission. And so, these things can make you bitter when you look at things that are happening in the world, or they can make you better. And my prayer is that it motivates you to understand, this is the, this is, this is the nature of the world. As a matter of fact, right before God destroyed the earth with the flood, it says that the mindset of man was only evil all the time. That's all they thought about. And they spared Noah and his family, and everybody else was obliterated, because the mindset was only evil all the time. And guess what? It looks like it's kinda where we are now even, does it not? I don't know, I can't compare and contrast. I don't, I wasn't back with Noah, but I'm gonna tell you right now. Listen, I think it's safe to say this, and you correct me if I'm wrong. It's more evil now in our lifetime than we've ever seen it. Is that a fair assessment? And so, you know, that can be very depressing, but at the same time, when there's that much evil, the contrast of the goodness of Christ, I think shines even brighter. Right? So, anyway, let's move on. Now, let's go to page two here, 2 Corinthians 5:6. Do I have a volunteer to read that?
We are always confident, even though we know that as long as we live in these bodies, we're at home with the Lord.
We are, listen, we are confident in the promised word of God, that as long as we live in these bodies, we understand we're not at home with the Lord. These bodies are finite, they're corruptible, but we will get new bodies, uncorruptible bodies, bodies that I won't have to wear glasses, bodies that won't be riddled with other issues, arthritis, lung disease, all these other things that we struggle with. These new bodies that we live, when we're at home with the Lord, the new heaven, the new earth, are incorruptible, incapable of sin. And so, even when you look at the Garden of Eden, this is kinda what heaven's gonna be like. It's gonna be kind of a return to a paradise place. Even hard, it's hard for me to imagine. There was a time on this earth before sin entered the world, where everything was perfect, perfect. It even says in Genesis that in the cool of the evening, Adam would talk with God, and there would be a dialogue even with God, ultimately even, right? And so, we understand, and again, it kinda harkens back to what Paul says in Philippians. I'm in these bodies now, but as long as I'm here, I understand I got work to do. But God, when you call me home, I will rejoice in that as well. Colossians 3:1 and 2.
So, if you have been raised with Christ, seek the things above where Christ is, seated at the right hand of God. Set your minds on things above, not on earthly things.
All right. Incredibly good counsel from God's word. Of course, what counsel from God's word is not good. And it kinda goes with that first bullet point. He talked about, you've heard this, you've said before maybe, you can be so heavily minded that you're no earthly good. Have y'all heard that before? And he says, "That's really a misnomer. That's not the case at all." As a matter of fact, we should be thinking about heaven. We should long for heaven, not to the point to where it immobilize us from doing kingdom work here, but we're longing for it, and we're longing to take as many people with us to heaven as possible. He said, "Those who are most heavily minded are the most earthly good." Again, because we're thinking about that. "The way I love and sacrifice, we are willing to make, when heavily minded are far greater." Because we understand, again, this world as it is is not our home. And so, the more I think about that, I'm like, you know, God, whatever sacrifices I have to make in order to show others the goodness and the grace and the mercy and the forgiveness and the love of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, God, I'm willing to make, because I know, listen, here's what I always say. Again, kinda keep things in perspective. If you live 100 years, oh, we think, man, that's a long, long time, right? It is, it's a long time to live on this earth. But how long is 100 years compared to eternity? It's not even a bat of an eye, right? It's very, it's such a short time compared to eternity. And so, I'll always think of this, when I know God's asking me to make certain sacrifices, to do kingdom work he wants me to do. Guess what? If I gotta suffer every day until now, until the day I die, that's gonna be a blink of an eye compared to the bliss of eternity with heaven, with Christ, right? And this is why a lot of times, well, one of the biggest things we're called to do is what? We're called as disciples of Christ to take up our cross, to deny ourselves, to take up our cross and follow him. Self-denial is not something we see a lot of today. Self-denial is not something that's celebrated today. As a matter of fact, people are like, no, I'm gonna fulfill every selfish desire I want to get into, no matter what that looks like, no matter if this is an attraction I have that is unholy. I'm gonna pursue that, I won't deny that for myself, because I wanna fulfill my own fleshly needs before I want to do what God wants me to do. Live, and then he talked about the live in the dot, but we live far the line that goes on forever. And that's the, it's kinda, that was kind of a good, just kinda visual illustration. We can't help but live where we are now, but this is not the end-all-be-all. We're living far that line that goes for eternity. All right. Another passage here, we got two to look at, Hebrews 11:13. I'll talk about that a little bit, and then we have 14 through 16 here. So, Hebrews 11:13.
These all died in faith, although they had not received the things that they were promised. But they saw them from a distance, greeted them, and confessed that they were foreigners and temporary residents on the earth.
Foreigners and temporary residents. And he used the word nomads in the New Living translation. That means that you're just kinda always moving around, right? And then he talked about this, and he was very intentional even underlining this terminology. "This world as it is now, that next bullet point, is not my home. We are not made to live in a world under the bondage of sin or under death and suffering." And this is why I wanna read one little excerpt out of the book that I gave you. And it's really at the beginning, because here's, here's where a lot of confusion comes in. I think about, this is, we're gonna start on page eight here. I think about this, I think a lot of times, especially when I'm doing funerals, people have a misconception of what happens when people die now. So, this gives a pretty detailed explanation of what happens to loved ones that die now before the new heaven and the new earth, right? So, let me just read it to you, okay? You can read along with me. He goes, "What we usually think of when we hear the word heaven is what theologians call the intermediate heaven. For Christians, it's where we go when we die. It's the place we'll live until our bodily resurrection. Our Christian loved ones who've died are now in this present intermediate heaven." This is an important point. "This is not the same as purgatory, which is not a biblical concept. This is a Catholic, a Catholic belief, right? The Bible teaches that Christ paid the complete price for our atonement, and thus we can do nothing to add to it." So, in Catholicism, there's a place for purgatory, where you kinda play pittance and you kinda earn the rest of your way to heaven. That's nowhere in God's word, okay? The heaven we go to when we die is a place without suffering, but is not the place we'll live forever. Our eternal home, where God will come down to dwell among his people, is called the new earth. And we'll talk about that a little bit, that's in Revelation 21. "At the culmination of human history, we're told, in reverence with the new earth, the dwelling place of God will be with men, and he will live with them, they will be his people, and God will be with them and be their God," Revelation 21:3. Since heaven is by definition God's dwelling place, the fact that we will come down to earth with us on this new earth will make it synonymous with heaven. So, the new earth and new heaven is kinda synonymous together when Jesus does ultimately come back. Often, we think of going to heaven as departing our place into an angelic realm to live with God in his place. But the Bible says that in the ultimate heaven, God will come down from his place to live with us in our place, the new heaven. This is the ascension of God, right? When he comes to take us ultimately, to build a new heaven, new earth. Emmanuel, and I love this, we're about to get into a Christmas season, hard to believe. One of the name of Christ does not mean us with God, us going to God. No, it means God with us, where we, where he will be with us. Where will he be with us? On the new earth. We've heard it said, "The world is not our home." That's true, but it's a half-truth. We should qualify by saying, "The world, the earth as it now is, under the curse, is not our home." But we should also say, "This world, the earth as it once was, AKA Eden, before sin and the curse, was our home." And we should add, "The world, the earth as one day will be delivered from sin, the curse will be our home." "In the intermediate heaven, we'll be with Christ, we'll be joyful, but it won't be our permanent home. We'll be looking forward to our bodily resurrection relocated to the new earth. Our loved ones won't go to the new earth before we get there. We'll go there together to colonize the new earth." The idea will go to a disembodied state. Fitzplatonism, which is an eastern mysticism, is not Christianity. Scripture says that there is a resurrection, but if there weren't, we would be, we would all be people most to be pity, because we believe in the new bodily resurrection. "On the new earth, we're told, no longer will there be any curse. The throne of God in his land will be in the city, and his servants will serve him," Revelation 22:3. God is the sovereign ruler of all false gods, will be taken down. Satan will be eternally dethroned, amen. People who reject God will be permanently dethroned, will be permanently dethroned. God will be permanently enthroned. "The Lord's prayer, prayer of countless millions of times over the centuries, will be dramatically answered. Thy kingdom come, thou wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven." I won't read the rest of it, but I thought that was a good, the rest of it is really good, but for time's sake, I won't go for the rest of it. But that gives us a good understanding of this whole idea of new heaven and new earth. All right, let's look at verses 14 through 16, our last passage. Do I have a volunteer to read that?
Obviously, people who say such things are looking forward to a country they can call their own. If they had longed for the country they came from, they could have gone back. But they were looking for a better place, a heavenly homeland. That is why God is not ashamed to be called their God, for he has prepared a city for them.
Amen. He's preparing, you hear that all the time, God's preparing a place for us. I even heard Keith Green one time say, you know, when he talks about preparing this, there are preparations now for the new heaven and new earth that are happening even right now. If it took six days to form the earth and the universe, and God's continually working on the new earth, imagine how much greater that's gonna be, just comparatively speaking. We think we want things in this world, but what we really want is the person we're made for, and that person is what? Who? Jesus. And a place we're made for, which is?
Heaven.
Heaven. We will never be satisfied with anything less. And I think we all understand that if you have the Holy Spirit dwelling in you, because you've received Christ Jesus as your Lord and Savior, you understand that you can pursue all the things of this world. None of it will satisfy. Nothing satisfies like Jesus, nothing. Nothing comes close to Jesus. And so, this is why we make it our chief aim to do that, what we were created to do. We were created to give God glory. And this is why, when we are pursuing the will of God, we're pursuing to give him the glory that he deserves, this is why our lives make most sense then. This is why we have the more contentment then, the more peace, the more joy, and things are put in a greater perspective for us. And we don't let the news that's going on out here trouble us. It should prompt us to pray in certain ways, and it should prompt us to maybe even be more bold about our witness, but we don't let the things of this world bring us down. We've got too much kingdom work to do. We can't sit down and just have a pity party about what's going on in the world. It should motivate us. It should kinda stoke our fire. So, all right, God, you know what? It's clear, you're getting closer every day to coming back. God, don't let me squander this gift you've given me called time. Let me use it to its maximum ability to do the things you've called me to do, to do the things God's called us to do as the church. All right. We're about to finish up, but I do wanna open it up. Any comments or questions, some things that maybe weren't clear, or if you have a question about what's going on now? I'd love to give you an opportunity to ask anything, or maybe something that you learned today, like, well, you know, I didn't really realize this, but this makes sense now. Just wanna give y'all an opportunity for some feedback.
This does make sense, because when I was a kid, a child, and I was raised Southern Baptist, I've never been to the church. I was raised Southern Baptist. I remember as a child, that you die and you don't go to heaven then, you know? You're not raised up. This makes sense to me, okay? There is this place before this place.
Exactly.
And you're never dead. You are always... Am I the only one that thought that, that you were still in the grave until God, until Jesus raised you up?
I can see, I know a lot of folks who have thought that same thing.
Yeah, and that's what I thought, and I thought, well, just... So, now, okay, I wanna ask a really stupid question, but I'll question you to death. It's happened, and there's the new earth. God is in heaven now. Is the new earth heaven, or is it a new earth, is it a different place?
It's, we're gonna unpack that, good question, good question. It's...
You're getting ahead to session three.
But to answer succinctly...
I won't do that too.
There almost, there's a combination of them. They're not, it's not distinct, the new heaven and the new earth. Heavens, as described in Scripture, is often talking about the sky and everything. You know what I'm saying? It's talking about atmospheric places, right? And so, new heavens and new earth, the reason we say heaven, and I think the why we have this idea that we go up to heaven is because we understand that there is this intermediate place called heaven, and that's not the new heaven and new earth. But it's certainly not on this earth, we know that. So, if it's not on this earth, it's gotta be somewhere, right? So, when the new heaven, new earth happens, it's, there's gonna be almost a common, there's not a separation there, they're kind of combined to be the same general idea and place, if that makes sense. Like I said, we'll unpack a lot of this.
Yeah, well, Jesus ascended, and it was Isaiah, or we turn to one.
That's right, exactly, exactly. So, that's another reason why we have this idea of it. It's somewhere, but it's not on this earth as it is now. Good, good, good observation.
I have one.
Yes.
People often say, and that, they don't mean any harm, they don't mean to be misquoted, but people say, when some loved one dies, well, that they're an angel in heaven then. Well, they're not.
That's right.
Angels are created beings.
Exactly.
Human beings are always human beings.
That's exactly right. And I think, and you know, and I hear, and sometimes I hear that, and they're in a state of grieving, and I don't, sometimes I don't correct them, because I, you know, it's just kind of place, you know? But you're exactly right. Angels are absolutely created beings. Satan was an angel.
Yes.
He was the angel of light. And pride got into him, he wanted the worship instead of God, and what happened? He rebelled. And when he rebelled, it says he took a third of the angelic host with him even. So, you're right, with the angels and humans are distinct. Matter of fact, it says in Scripture, "We'll judge the angels." And so, there's, they're different beings, and you know, like, right now, we're in a place to where I think we can almost be like, dang, how incredible would it be to be an angel, to be in the throne of God, to see the things that these seraphim think now? But it says also in Scripture that the angels kind of are longing to be us, because we have this understanding of grace and mercy and forgiveness and love and faith that they never have. Because see, angels don't need faith, because they see God. We don't see God, but so faith is a necessity for our salvation. We have to believe, believe to the point that it's the very fiber of who we are. We believe who Jesus is, who he says he was, and that he is the Redeemer. He atoned for our sins on the cross. And two distinct beings, but that's a great observation. When you hear folks say that, say, well, they're an angel now. No, they're not an angel, they're still human, they're just in that intermediate place. And that's a great observation. Anyone else?
I have this feeling that, yes, I want to go to heaven, but from what I'm hearing, we're supposed to be longing for heaven. I wanna go there, but I wanna do it today.
I'm not in any hurry. Absolutely. Jane, absolutely. That makes a complete and total sense. Because I think of it this way, Jane. I think of the fact that God has given us all specific kingdom work to do while we're on this earth. And God's gonna call us home after we have an opportunity to do that. Now, will we do every single thing that we're called? I think our sin nature's not gonna allow, we're not gonna. I'll just think about this. I think of missed opportunities that I've had to do kingdom work, that there's times that passed. You know what I'm saying? Maybe somebody who I could have witnessed to, and I missed that opportunity. I let fear get in the way or something like that. And so I don't know if we'll get to do every single thing we were called to do, but God. Jane, I think that attitude is absolutely perfect, as a matter of fact. Well, I think it's what Paul said, to live as Christ and to die as gain, you know? I want to live for you, Jesus. I want to, because I'll be honest with you, there's a part of me, you know, I've got four kids. I don't have any grandkids. But I hear about all great-grandkids. I want to know what grandkids are gonna be like, dang, don't it, you know? So there's a part of me that wants to see that. But I will say this, if Jesus calls me home before that happens, I'm fine with that as well. Fine with that as well. Good word. Anything else before we close in prayer? Well, thank y'all for being here, man. I hope this has been enjoyable. I hope that it's been informative, and I hope it's even been more in terms of, gosh, you know what? It's put things in perspective. You got away from the house, you got away from the news, and you got to hear the good news of the gospel and the good news of the eternal place that those of us who know Christ as our Lord and Savior, this new heaven and new earth, it's going to be, it's truly indescribable. Scripture's just trying to describe it, but even I don't think our minds can wrap around the greatness of the new heaven and the new earth. Let me pray for us and we'll be dismissed. God, thank you again for this incredible day that you give us. Every day you give us is a gift. Every minute of time you give us, God, is a gift, God, that we are, again, to use to glorify you. Thank you so much for the interaction and for drawing the folks here to here this morning. And may, God, we continue to come back with hearts open, minds open, and with a will, just leaning on God wanting to do what you call us to do for your glory, which, God, when we do anything for your glory, it's always for our good. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.